Undisclosed.
Oh, my God.
I'll tell you after the meeting.
All right. I hate I hate to break up everybody's party, but it is 10 o'clock. So. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors regular meeting. It is 10 o'clock on Tuesday, October 7th. I will call this meeting to order. If you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. First up is to approve the meeting minutes dated September 23rd, 2025.
Make that motion.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any question or comments on the minutes? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item four, approve agenda.
Madam Chair, so moved.
I'll second.
You any questions or comments on the agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item five, approve consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move item five.
I'll second.
I have a motion and second. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up. Favorite part. Item six, to recognize and celebrate some of our employees for their incredible contributions and loyalty. These are folks who are celebrating work anniversaries in the month of October. Angela Harrison, 27 years of service at CSRU. Sonya Nicholson, 17 years of service in secondary roads. Joshua Pyle, 14 years in the assessor's office. Melinda Jacobs, also 14 years treasurer's office. Jeffrey Hune, 13 years secondary roads. Trevor Itson, eight years secondary roads. Jacob Moore, eight years secondary roads. David Sierra, seven years in secondary roads. Shawna Fulton, seven years in the health department. Lexi Huggins, seven years in the health department. Anne Bean, five years in the health department. Annette Alljets, three years in the health department. Griffin Heine, three years in the jail. John Simpson, three years working at the jail. Mark Davis, three years in the jail. Justin Cruna, two years in the county attorney's office. Clay Greve, two years in secondary roads. Emma Bayes, two years in the health department. CJ Barker, two years in the communications center. Samantha Parman, two years in the communications center. Keaton Lund, one year in the sheriff's office, and Christine King, one year working at the jail. Thank you all so much for your years of service. We really appreciate you and what you do for us. Item seven, receive in place on file fiscal year 2024 geographic distribution of VA expenditures, GDX, from Dan Levanduski, Director of Veterans Affairs. This time I screwed up your first name. How did I do that?
Well, you got the last name right. That's better.
Yeah, I know. All right.
Morning, Board of Supervisors. Dan Levanduski, Webster County Veterans Affairs Director. This morning, I'm bringing to you the geographical index reports, the report the VA puts out on the fiscal year. They are year behind because of the statistics. It takes that long to get them all together. Usually, this report comes out in April-June timeframe. I just received it October 1st. For whatever reason, they're behind, but here we are. As you can see on the report I gave you, it breaks down what veterans are bringing into Webster County through compensation claims. Last year was fiscal year 24, that is, was the $11,708,633. That is, I always like to stress this, that's new money coming into the local economy from service-related injuries that the veterans have sustained, and they get compensated for that. In addition to that, through the local VA clinic, last year, or fiscal year 24, they brought in just over $20 million to the clinic. So the VA in Webster County brings in a lot of new money through my office and the clinic. Questions on that? Okay. Next report then is the VA person's survey report.
Dan, I'm going to stop you because that's our next agenda item. Okay with that?
Yep.
All right. Any questions or comments for Mr. Levanduski? All right. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move item seven.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item eight, receive in place on file fiscal year 2025 VA Person Served Report from Dan Levanduski, Director of Veterans Affairs.
Okay, and this report is for the fiscal year 25 rollup of veterans that came into my office seeking rent or utilities or burial assistance. And we paid out from those veterans $10,948.67. Okay, well under the budget for that, so. And those are what we term indigent veterans.
Can you explain that to anyone who might not know?
Those are those for, that are just, they're in the valleys of life, we'll just say. So the VA, they come in and we have a commission that oversees this. This is not my decision. This is a commission decision whether to approve or disapprove of the, whatever they're seeking as far as a burial, rent assistance, utilities, water.
I like the way you put that. Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions or comments for Dan? All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve item number eight.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Well, I do have one thing. It wasn't on the agenda. I don't know if I can add it for the first quarter for fiscal year 26 or not. I sent to the auditor's office. I didn't notice it was, I just noticed this morning it wasn't on there. So can that be added now or have to wait?
Think you could provide additional information on it?
It's just the fiscal year first quarter, what veterans we served, and it was three veterans for $1,061 as well. So, and that'll be in as well for next year, so.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, item nine, approve and authorize chairperson to sign a letter of support to the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services for LifeWorks Community Services to serve up to five people in eight 24-hour sites within Webster County, per Teresa Notton, Executive Director of LifeWorks.
There's a move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mrs. Notton, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Great, thank you.
Well, if it's moved, I may not need to say anything, and so.
I would love for you to explain, if you don't mind.
I'm happy to explain. So, LifeWorks Community Services serves over 150 people in both Webster and Humboldt Counties. And we're having some workforce issues, yet we want to serve all of the people that we still serve. And so how do we do this? Well, in Webster County, we have eight 24-hour sites where we serve four people each, and we need special permission so that we can serve five people instead of four, so that maybe we can have fewer homes, but more people in the homes, which is a service model. It works, and it's okay to provide services to five individuals with disabilities in one location. It's okay under federal rules, but there has to be permission. So we thought that that permission needed to come from CICS, which also does some funding of some of our services. But lo and behold, because of all the fruit basket upset in July and all of the changes, we instead need to ask you for that permission. And so I'm happy to answer any questions. But there's a letter that we would love for you all to approve the signature of, so we can send that to HHS so that we can get your permission to serve more than four people in one 24-hour site. According to the rules, one of the things that it does talk about is that there cannot be an over-concentration of too many people with disabilities living in one place. Our sites are scattered throughout Fort Dodge. This would certainly take care of needs of people currently served. And let's see if there's anything else from a regulatory standpoint that I should make sure I mention. I don't think there is. So do you have any questions?
Your opinion, this change wouldn't cause any significant change in the level of service provided to the people you're caring for? And I'm assuming you're doing this without changing staff?
Correct. We wouldn't be changing staff when it comes to the level of supervision. Kind of our model is that we have maybe three homes per supervisor, and we have a float staff that goes to the sites. And so that float staff becomes really important to be able to take someone to an appointment while being able to, you know, have the rest of the people be able to stay at home without having to go because they need absolute 24-hour supervision, can't be left alone for 10 minutes, because sometimes that is a need. In doing something like this, we could actually fill, wow, there's a concept, fill those float positions. So in some ways, there could be some improvement of service, but I'd also be remiss if I didn't say, wow, one staff, five person, five people in a house, yeah, someone might get a little more attention, someone might get a little bit less. So I'd like to think that it would even out, to be fully transparent. Good question.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mrs. Notton? Okay, I do have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. I'm happy to sign it for you. Of course, you gotta love bureaucracy, huh? Okay, item 10, John Huff with Mid-American Energy Company would like to update the Board of Supervisors on the Mid-American Lundgren Wind Farm Repowering Project.
Hey, good morning. So we've had a very successful repowering project at Lundgren, and we should be wrapping up by the end of 2025. As far as the actual work on the wind farm itself, though, there may be a little bit of restoration work that carries over into next year, but that would just be if we plant grass and stuff here at the end of the year, and it doesn't come up as well as we want to, basically. So we may have to replant some grass at 2026 at worst, but other than that, we are finishing up. The turbines are mostly all topped off, as they say, so there's some work still being done inside some of the turbines, but that's coming to a close pretty quick here. Most of our construction crews already actually started moving on to another repowering project across the state. So I guess I would take any questions that you have about where things stand. My understanding is we are working on constructing an aircraft detection lighting system tower. So that's another exciting thing that comes with some of these repowers. But other than that, I think hopefully that gives you a good idea of where we stand with things.
I was asked to ask you about the staging area, when you plan to bring it back to the original state?
Can I get back with you on exactly when we'll have that done?
Yep.
Okay, I can shoot you an email or something.
All right, great. Thank you.
I had a question, just because we want to be a good partner in all of this. Have you had much in the way of vandalism, theft losses while you've been there? I know I read occasionally, you know, there were suspicious people in the area, but I don't know whether we've had any actual filed prosecution.
I'm not sure. That happens from time to time on all kinds of projects. I don't know that it's been to a large extent, just because as they say, no news is good news, and I have only heard so much about that this year from any project, so.
Well, whoever, if there's a point person, if there are any cases that have been filed that we could, you know, find any suspects on, just make sure we stay in touch so we can find people after they've moved on.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Have there been any issues with the 169 Road project and your project? Is everything working out okay, or?
I think everything must be working out pretty good, because we're still on schedule with everything we wanted to accomplish, so.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, item 11, JD Myers would like to update the Board of Supervisors on the Summit Carbon Solutions Project. Howdy, thank you.
You're fine. All right, thanks for putting us on the agenda and letting us be here today. My name is JD Myers. I'm Ag and Stakeholder Relations for Summit. Give you a quick project update on where we're at and what's new. The first page there talks about our new leadership team. So Joe Griffin is the new CEO for Summit Carbon. Joe's been in the industry for 40-some years, and then Mike Higgins is with me here today. Mike's COO for Summit Carbon. And it's not just those two people that have come on. It's a whole team that have worked together on multiple projects across the United States, moving different products through pipelines. So they've got a ton of experience. They can get projects like this done and have in the past. I won't read you all the boxes, but some of the highlights are we've got new commitments to landowners and stakeholders across route. We'll talk about those in a little bit. We've got path forward for the CO2 and have asked the IUC for some amendments to our Phase 1 permit, and we can talk about that. Open dialogue. Joe, invite any of you, if you have any questions, would like to meet, sit down, talk more about the project. Kylie Lang's contact info is there. So if you have any questions, would like to meet, you know, contact Kylie, and we can set that up for you. The next page talks about the vision, mission, and values. Again, I won't read the whole slide to you. You guys can take chance or take time to read through that. But the biggest thing I'll tell you is that we're here to support agriculture. So I'm a, I farm. I live up just north of you here in Humboldt County. The reason I'm involved with the project is because I see the value that it adds to ethanol, and that comes back to the farmer and the corn. I want to really see the boom like we saw in 2005 when ethanol got started here in Iowa and all the construction of the plants took off. I see this as the next stage to get to the next plateau for farming and continue to see the farms profitable. On the next page there are land ownership and community partner programs. So this really gets into what we've changed. The first box there talks about easement options and annual payments. So we can do an upfront easement payment. If it's a farmer signs an easement or landowner signs an easement, we can do an upfront payment. We can spread it out. We've had a lot of people ask, you know, we want to spread out over five years or 10 years, just for the fact of tax planning. One of the other things that we've heard a lot about is people say that, you know, like the windmills, we want a royalty yearly on the windmills based on production. Or we want to be compensated, just like the investors are compensated in the project. And so we've done that. We've gave an option for the landowners to have that easement payment come back to them as an investment and be right alongside the shareholders and the investors in the project and receive the same returns on those incentives, what the investors would. And then annual stakeholder payment paid per foot on their ground that it goes across. So again, we've heard a lot of people say, we just want a per foot price going across the ground. And we've worked on that to come up with a price per foot in addition to the easement. Survey and construction commitment, landowners are going to get at least a 72-hour notice of survey. If we come out to survey the ground, it'll be a $500 payment, and that's just us walking across the ground, taking shots, you know, with GPS. And it's nothing more than that. And then we're going to follow the ag and pipeline industry best practices on construction and restoration. So there is a document called the Ag Impact Mitigation Plan that's been filed with the state. It goes through a very detailed, you know, what size rocks we have to pick up, how we have to fix drainage style going across there and things like that. Emergency responder preparedness. So we have committed to this in the past, and it's just kind of a recap on it, but there's $50,000 per county that we're going to pay as a grant. And then if you go on the back page there, there's a map of the project in your county. And it shows at the bottom there that there's a little over 60 miles in Webster County, so that'd be an additional $60,000. So you'd be at $110,000 for the community grant that we would pay before operations. There'd be a specific CO2 or a fund for specific CO2 equipment that the firefighters and emergency responders may need. We'll implement a real-time notification system for any incidents that may happen along the pipeline to notify the residents. And then ongoing coordination and annual exercises for first responders. Now, I know you guys have a paid fire department here in Fort Dodge, but a lot of the volunteers around the area, you know, they change. They aren't going to be there forever, so we'll come in yearly and more often if the fire chief or the emergency management requests us to, and give training on all these pipelines or on a CO2 pipeline. Community partnership, again, this is an annual county grant based on the footage of the pipeline in the county. So that's one of the things that we also heard from residents is that, you know, we're going to need ongoing funding for that. And this is one way we're doing that. And then, of course, the property taxes that we're going to pay, and that's the other sheet that's on the back of the program there, the breakdown for Webster County. So it's going to be a little more than $4 million a year in property taxes that we'll pay. 100 or 1.76 million of that goes to your local schools. 245,000 goes to the community college, 96,000 goes to townships, and then 1.9 million goes to your general fund that you can spend however you see fit. And then with that, on the last page, we've got open houses here in November. One of those happens to be in Fort Dodge. So, you know, we encourage you guys to come out to it, go through, find out more about the project. Management team will be there to answer questions. You know, it'll be open to the public. Anybody can come, and we'll get an invite sent out, too. So. With that, do you guys have questions for us about the project?
Just so folks online can hear, the open house event in Fort Dodge is on November 13th from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Webster County Fairgrounds in the West Wing. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Yep, and I think these are published online somewhere. In the paper, yeah. So if you can't make the Fort Dodge one, there are some other ones around. You might have to drive a little bit further, but there are other options if you can't make the Fort Dodge one.
Is there any, if you have any questions before we open it up?
Got one, I guess. When I look at the, because I haven't seen this, I've heard about it a little bit. So with the annual county grant, I guess I'll start with that. So it's based on voluntary easements signed.
Yep.
So I guess I'm trying to understand, like, we don't control whether people sign off on those in other counties, don't you? You have some counties that they manage to get everybody, some might have a short distance, and they get everybody in there. When I read that, to me, I guess it kind of looks like I'm supposed to try to help make sure you get voluntary easements, because that helps the county get more money.
No, we don't expect the supervisors to play any role in that.
Well, but I guess my challenge a little bit with that, though, is the incentive to the county on that community grant is based on the voluntary easement. So it's in the county's best interest to help make sure you get voluntary easements based on the language that you have there. I mean, if it were just based on mileage, then it wouldn't, then we really would play no role in that. But we have a personal now incentive to help make sure you get voluntary easements. Where other counties may have a lot of landowners that are willing, you know, I'm all for it, that's great, if they want to. But it feels like, at least as a board, if we're incentivized based on your voluntary easements, my idea then should be, I want to try to get as much money as I can for the county, so it's our best interest to help get that. So it kind of feels like we're being asked to help make sure you get that, because our incentive is, the county board is to help make sure you get voluntary easements, because we, as a county, get more money. You see what I'm saying with that? Like, I don't know if anybody's asked that before, but I guess I just, you know, part of my heartburn, and when I read that, I think it's great that you're doing it, but part of my heartburn with that is it feels like as a board, especially for some of the counties that maybe don't get as many voluntary easements, you're asking, you know, you're saying, hey, we're going to give you more money based on how many voluntary easements we get. And it feels like, at least as a member of this board, like, my job then becomes, I need to help make sure the county is financially, you know, solvent. We're getting all that we can, how we can, as fiscally responsibly as we can. It feels like it's now my job to help make sure you get voluntary easements, because I now have a financial incentive to make sure you do.
No, I understand what you're saying. It's our job to go out and get the voluntary easements, and we're working every day to get those voluntary.
No, I know that, but if my financial incentive is your voluntary easement, as a board, it feels like I'm being asked to help make sure you get that, because I now, as a board, have a financial incentive to make sure you get 100% easements. You know, if we only get 70% or whatever the breakdown is, you know, now we're only worth whatever you were able to get. And it feels like the onus then becomes us. If I want to get more money, I have to help make sure you get those easements done.
Oh, sorry. Hey, excuse me. Yeah, please go in front of the mic. Say who you are.
I'm Mike Higgins with Summit Carbon. Our view was for the county to be able to share in our success. In no way were we wanting to put you in a position to have any influence. It's if we were to get more voluntary easements than the county shared in their success. That's the only intent.
But yes, that's part of my, I guess, part of my question with it, though, is, you know, our shared success is whether you build it or not. You know, because the property taxes you highlight in the page, you know, we have that, we have a shared success, we have a financial incentive to want you to do that. But what you're saying is above and beyond that, if you get, if you guys get voluntary easements, we now get an additional incentive. And so I guess for me, from the board perspective, and I'm not going to speak for anybody else on this board, but it feels like, you know, I would now have, and maybe it's more of like, you're not obviously telling us we have to go do that, but the way that's written is, hey, if we get all of these easements, you now have an added incentive. Whereas if it's, hey, we really want to share in that success, here is the community development grant based on mileage. Because at the end of the day, if it gets built, whether it's with eminent domain or 100% easement, that's how that works out. If it were just purely based on mileage and not based on your performance, you get what I mean? Like, if I said, you know, you guys get that based on what we're able to do, is that really fair? Because.
Just to be clear, I want to make sure that the community grant, the 110,000, I talked about the 50 plus the 60, that's, that has no tie to the easements. The easement incentive would be a yearly payment per mile or per foot of pipeline in the county. It's.
Like in here, it says the community grant increases as milestones as voluntary easements are reached within the county. So if you reach 100% easement, the county gets 100% of that benefit. If you don't reach 100% voluntary easements, now the county no longer gets 100% of your shared benefit there. We're going to get whatever percentage you break it down as. So to me, when I look at it from a. So to me, when I look at it from a business perspective as a board, financially, it's in my best interest to help make sure you get 100% easement. Because we get more money than, you get what I'm saying? Because and that's where I struggle with that, because when I read that, that was one of the big hangups. I've heard a little bit about it, and I kind of wanted to try to understand it because it feels like you're asking the county boards to help make sure that we will financially incentivize you if you help make sure we get 100% easements.
It's a very fair point, was not our intent, and we can, we will go back and look at it. Don't want to, we do not want to put you in that position in any way.
And I don't know if anybody, any, I know you've met with other boards. I don't know who all you met with. I don't know if that question's ever come up before, but that was just something I had read. And and I, when I looked at it, I didn't have a lot of info, so I just, that's why I want to just have a discussion about it. Because that's kind of my, when I first read that, that's kind of how I take it, is I feel like it's my job to help make sure you get it because it's in my interest to make sure you get there.
Very fair point. We'll take a look at it.
When we have hearing, are the hearings for phase two, I guess, where are we at with phase two then?
They are not currently scheduled.
Okay.
And we don't know when that will be. It's strictly up to IUC. So it's when they decide that they're ready to to have hearings.
Other questions from the DIES? All right. Any questions from the public? Go on up. You know the drill. And then if you if you do respond, I do just ask that you come back up to the podium. Thank you so much.
I have a question on the.
Please, please state your name.
Certainly. My name is Chris Hike. I'm a resident of Webster County. About the 72-hour notice this gentleman just spoke about for surveying your land, it's my understanding that it takes a court order. Not just a notice. If someone would come survey someone's property that they said a slip 72-hour notice. And I was always in understanding that it would require a court order. Just throwing that out there.
Like to respond. Go ahead.
We follow the statutory requirement, but then also do a 72-hour notice and a $500 payment. So it's the 72 doubt, 72 hours is in addition to the statutory requirement, which is a 10-day notice.
And is that, to Chris's point, is that a, is that a court ordered notice?
It's the process through the IUC.
Okay. Thank.
Iowa Code 479B.15. I'd have looked it up once.
Trust you on that one. Yes.
Summit's CO2 pipeline project funded by 45Q tax credits would be built by a private company that has never built a CO2 pipeline. Any company that bases their income on government tax credit is not a viable company. Tax credits derived from all taxpayers. We would all pay for this project. Someone has changed the pipeline diameter recently from eight inches to 12 inches in Webster County. An increased pipeline diameter from Iowa into Nebraska from 12 inches to 24 inches. Why? South Dakota has banned the use of eminent domain for CO2 pipelines. So where is the pipeline's end destination? As an affected landowner in Webster County, my property rights should be protected by the Constitution of the United States. There should be no eminent domain for a private company's gain. This project is not a public utility, a public use utility. I've had to deal with this boondoggle over four years. It's my right to say no to this project. I have a lot more to say, like the massive amount of water that's required for this project, energy demands. And insurance issues, et cetera. But there's just not enough time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hike. Did you want to address anything that she noted or asked in that? Feel free.
Yeah, there was a pipeline upsized in Webster County. And it's it's on the eastern side going up to Cornell P. It doesn't affect all the landowners. There there are a few that that the easement will need to be updated on. But majority of them were were written correctly. So that pipeline had to be upsized when we added the Valero plants and and Po plant. So that was the reason for the upsize going out to Nebraska. That pipeline is also requested be upsized. And and the reason for that is, like Ms. Hike noted, South Dakota has changed some of their laws and we want to have options. So one of the options is if we go west, that's that's definitely an option for us. And we want to have that ability to go west if if we end up not going north or or be able to go both both directions with it. And as far as the the, you know, the tax credits, that's a part of the project. But I I can tell you, lower in the CI score at the plants, being able to sell that fuel into the low carbon markets and get a premium for that fuel for the ethanol plants is is also a major factor in the project. And and again, that's the whole idea behind the project is to help ethanol open up new markets, sell new gallons that they aren't selling today. And then in the future, if we can make sustainable aviation fuel out of out of our ethanol, we have to have low carbon ethanol to do that. And and this project will get us there.
What else?
I have a printout of the map that shows the different size diameter pipe that we just discussed, and it doesn't show it going to Valero. The inch, you want to see a copy? It's from its copy.
It was up to Valero right next to car.
Is that where the pipe on the size is changed?
No, it changes right here. No, it changed because we had the lower quote on after page one. Correct, this is a one. And then base two is a Valero quote minus teen add.
Is is this something that can be taken offline? Okay, thank you. Yes, come on up. Make sure you say your name and where you're from, please.
I'm Nancy Smallenberger from Vincent. I just wondered what percentage of voluntary easements they have received in Webster County as opposed to the number of easements they had that were required. So how many were, what percentage were voluntary?
On permit one, we're at 71%. Permit two, we're at 24%.
What's the difference between just for permit one and permit two?
Permit one was our phase one pipeline, which would be just the 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 permit. Number one, we got through the IUC. And then as we expanded the project, we went in with the 2.0 permit with the additional ethanol plants, and that added additional pipeline mileage to new facilities.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Sure. What did, what was the additional mileage added with phase two? I can't.
Phase two.
I guess for Webster County.
In Webster County, I think it was 31 miles for phase two.
Other questions or comments? Come on down. Make sure you say who you are, even though we all know you.
I'm Alan Hike. I'm a Webster County resident and I am owner. I guess my question is, is to me, this is a property rights issue. I says, I've had people ask me to or say that they've got the right to say yes. Well, I also should have the same right to say no. So I'm asking Summit, have you explored any avenues to avoid my property or any other's property that is being affected by this pipeline?
The the way the permit is set up and the corridors that we have to stay in through environmental, cultural, historical surveys do, does not give us a wide swath or path to be able to choose, especially after that corridor gets established. I think that, you know, we have changed the route many times and and are still willing to look at it with landowners that don't want the pipeline on on their property. So it's it's a part of the what we're reviewing now and will continue to work on.
So if somebody would not agree to have the pipeline going through, they can contact you or they can speak with you about that? Right?
And we'll we'll review it. Like I said, we we don't have a wide swath of room to be able to move. But if it's possible, we will definitely take a look at it.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess maybe is there a planned, like, easement number to hit before it goes to the IUC? Or when, like, is that, I guess I'm not sure where we're at with the scheduling on that. Like, is there, well, for phase two, because obviously I know you have you have phase one. But is there a certain number that we're trying to target, you're trying to target with that before you go to the IUC?
We have, we have no number targeted and and haven't been provided any information from the IUC. I think there's a lot of legal aspects that are taking place right now that will have to get cleared up before they'll set a hearing. But we don't, we don't have a a number that we're trying to go after. Our number is 100%. That's that's what we're tasked to do and what we want to do.
Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Just say your name and where you're from.
Daphne Willworth from Vincent, and I really wasn't prepared to speak, but I'm just really concerned about the safety issue. I've watched videos. I've heard if there's a drift and there's a kill zone, I'm really concerned of how close this pipeline is to schools, bigger communities. I think there's a bigger underlying issue. If you've never built this before, in clear conscience, can you assure safety? And you can't. And I think it's our due diligence to, and I know the IUC probably it's above our heads, but I'm just really concerned from an emergency management perspective, you don't get a do-over with some of this stuff. And you could potentially kill people. And if you've never built this before, I don't want it running by a school. I don't run it, want it running by Fort Dodge or Claire or Vincent where it could kill people. And I think even I don't agree with eminent domain. I don't agree with you taking property rights for a private company at all. But I really am concerned with the safety issue. Just wanted to make a comment.
Thank you, Daphne. Appreciate it. Feel free to respond to anything or not. Okay.
It made me think it's the, so on your map, you have the main, just kind of talking about that, maybe this can help. So on the map, you've got mainline valves identified. Are those those emergency shut offs or are those like a manual? I guess I've, I know I've I've talked with you guys and others about like the safety valves. I didn't know, like, on this map, it says mainline valve. Is that considered the safety valve or is that like a manual shop?
Yeah, no, it'd be the, it would also serve as a a safety valve. So if there is ever a leak detected, you know, it can automatically shut those off to isolate that. We can manually shut them off from our control room if if things don't look quite right, we can shut them off. And those are, you can see how they're spaced out there depending on, you know, location near population, rivers, roads, and stuff like that. And it's all, that's all dictated by Thims on how those are located.
What's the distance? You got one by Lehigh, and then the next one goes up to Wright County. What's the the distance between those two? I know there's a standard for it. I just don't know what that does.
The maximum is 20 miles, but these are much closer than that. And we can, we can sit down with you sometime and get you the distances if you want between the between the belts.
Yeah, I'm just, there's, yeah, one kind of south and east of Lehigh, and then the next one is up up in Wright County. I just, I didn't know if you knew, I know it's kind of an off the cuff question. There's just a pretty sick, looking at the other lines in there, that's a significant distance without.
There's also one northeast of Lehigh, too.
Or no, sorry, that's what I'm looking at, northeast.
Okay, yep.
I just put my eyes on the other one. No, you're right. So that, between that one and the one in Wright County, I guess I just didn't know what the distance between those two were. I was assuming it'd be less than 20, but.
It is, yep, for sure. And we can, we can get you that distance, too.
If you could, I'd appreciate it.
Yep, you bet.
And in the unlikely event, some sort of a breach of one of the the pipelines, is there any sort of early detection warning?
Yeah, people can get out of reach. For sure. So also we have a a system, a SCADA system, you know, and we can get into that. If you come to our open house, we'd be happy to walk through all this information with you more in depth, one-on-one. But yes, there is, and it'll be like a reverse 911 that that calls out the people in that area and says, hey. Correct. We can, we can, we can trigger that. Yep. And and honestly, the the best, best advice or the advice is to 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 stay indoors because the CO2 isn't going to force its way into your house. If it comes, if you're outside and and there would happen to be a breach, it would be loud. It'd be a really loud sound whistle of that CO2 coming out of the pipe, and you would hear it, and you can make make plans to get out of there. Yeah, if it was muffled under the ground, it it wouldn't be as much of a concern. You'd see a frozen spot, and that'd be about it. You wouldn't see a a large amount of CO2 coming out. So again, we'd be happy to talk about all that stuff in detail at the open house. You guys come out, we'll have.
I just wasn't aware on what safety protocols there were, so that's somewhat comforting that there's going to be an automatic alarm system in the event of a breach.
Yep, yep. And we'll have experts at those open houses that can talk about this stuff, too.
My suggestion would at least for, I'm I'm guessing that all of them would want to know this, but just to make a note of the questions that are asked here today and then be able to address those on the 13th.
You bet.
So that way you're not having a lot of back and forth.
Oh, absolutely. We can. Appreciate your time.
Okay, one last. And I think I've done. Just real quick. So with the upsize and piping, is it just a volume change then? Is the pressure going to change?
It's just a volume increase. Adding those two plants is more volume. So we have the, the pressure is more dictated to keep it into the the supercritical state than it is volume.
I I was kind of assuming that. I just, I wanted to ask because I don't.
Yep.
I don't like to assume things.
Yep, no, I appreciate that.
Anything else? Okie dokes. Find my place again. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next up is a citizen's opportunity to address the board with items not on the agenda. Dan, you're just sitting there by yourself. Do you have anything you want to talk about? No? Okay. Next up, Board of Supervisors Committee reports. Supervisor Thode.
Two linking family meetings this week. I have a central agility meeting on Friday and groundbreaking for Grayswood Recovery Center, which is CFR in Des Moines on next Tuesday at 10:30 in the morning.
Supervisor Cochran.
All right. So last two weeks, we had our meeting out at the landfill. People haven't really been using the burn pit as much as they'd hoped. There's been several upgrades made to the physical properties, such as upgrading the garages. And since Mark Campbell has moved on to Doge, we've moved him over to a part-time position. Over at CICS, they remain confident that all expenditures that were given to them for mental health services, which, as you guys know, they no longer cover, will be paid off, provided they got them by the end of July. There will be some changes to the executive board due to the fact that we went from being 16 counties to 44. So that's coming down on the pipelines. And then as far as what's going on in the community, I know that AFIS is going to be doing some basketball. And so should Parks and Rec.
And Mark going to gas instead of Doge, right? I was like, okay, Supervisor Hike, please.
I got public health meeting this week. City County Growth Alliance on Friday. Next week, we've got a strategic planning department head meeting. And then our possibly our Beaver Creek watershed meeting. So we're still there. It's kind of up in the air right now. Our coordinator is, we originally were funded through the EPA. Since about July, Idols gave us a $1.9 million grant, which basically is taking over what the EPA was using. However, because it also goes back to the EPA, he has lost currently anyway, access to his computer and internet, ever email and everything. So, yeah, so I will probably be helping lead that, but most likely having that meeting here next week, so.
summary.
Item I have to report is that we are looking for snow removal bids at the Yell Building here in Webster County. And I believe the deadline is 9:00 AM on October 14th. We'll be accepting those. So if you know of anybody or want to bid, that would greatly appreciate it.
Abrams, assuming you want to talk about election.
Yes, if you're in Ward Three, today's the day to go vote till 8 o'clock at the Public School Administration Building.
AKA the old Hy-Vee.
Yep.
All right. Mr. Driscoll, anything? All right. All right. Uh, a couple of Fridays ago, we had city county. Uh, Tuesday, the 30th of September, I had the Greater Fort Dodge Growth Alliance Leading Ladies Luncheon, which was a huge success. Just for the fun of it, uh, this weekend was the first weekend of Apple Fest at the Community Orchard. It's going on for the next two weekends. I had seven children with me on Saturday and they all gave it a thumbs up. So there you go. Tomorrow we have visit Fort Dodge at 4:00 PM and the EMS Advisory Council right here in this room at 5:30 PM. Friday, as Supervisor Hike said, we have city county. Um, did want to mention that Saturday is, uh, 3:30's Daybreak Rotary's Annual Drive Through Chili and Cinnamon Roll Supper at First Presbyterian Church. Had to do that. It's a drive-through. Um, Thursday, the 16th, I have a meeting about the Ag Park. And then Saturday, the 18th is Oktoberfest at Merryweather Park in the Pleasant Valley neighborhood of Fort Dodge. Next up is allow claims.
So moved.
Any questions or comments on claims? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. If there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.